Good evening, welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is Marion City Council meeting for Thursday, August 21st. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Mr. Miskman? Mayor Abou Osley?
Present.
Ms. Menser?
Here.
Mr. Brandt?
Here.
Mr. Sterneb?
Here.
Thank you. It's time we have a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. First item on the agenda this evening is a public forum, which is a time for comments from members of the public on any topic that is listed on the agenda but not associated with a public hearing. If you are here to address the council on any topic that is part of a public hearing on tonight's agenda, there will be time at that time to speak. And then we have a public forum at the end of the meeting for all other items. So the first one is for topics listed on the agenda but not part of a public hearing. I would like to review the rules of procedure for public forums. Please complete the yellow card at the end of the table and hand it to the clerk before you speak. Please do not approach the dais where the council is sitting. If you have handouts, please submit the materials to the city clerk for distribution of the council. Once you are called forward, please state your name and address and any group affiliation. Anyone wishing to address the council will be provided with a maximum of five minutes for your comments. Please do not engage in conduct or speech that is imminent threatening to any person or which incites violence or which is obscene. Please avoid making disparaging remarks against any individual, but keep it to your comments relevant to the topic at hand. Please avoid repeating comments or points that have been previously shared by others. Please do not engage in conduct that disrupts the orderly progress of the meeting or engage in speech or conduct which interferes with others' ability to participate in the meeting. Failure to adhere to these guidelines or engaging in any disruptive speech or behavior will, after a warning, result in removal from the meeting. We appreciate everyone's cooperation with these rules. And so now we'll open the first public forum, which is for comments on any topic that is on the agenda and not associated with a public hearing. Anyone who's here to address the council, please come forward. Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Mike Murphy. I live at 3132 Artesian Road, Marion, Iowa. And they're, I think it's E, they're talking about rezoning it. And I'm against it. I like the neighborhood. It was zoned correctly. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. You know, it's a quiet neighborhood. There's not a lot of traffic. And they're gonna, they're gonna rezone it and they're gonna have a lot of smaller lots. I like the neighborhood the way it is, and I'm against this rezoning. And that's all I gotta say.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Please come forward. There's several people have walked in. We'll just announce to you that we're taking comments from members of the public on any topic on the agenda but not part of a public hearing. If you're here to address the council on such matter, please come forward. Okay. Okay, we'll close this part of the meeting and proceed to the consent agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, and it will include items A1 through E4 and resolution numbers 32505 through 32513.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented, including items A1 through E4, resolutions 32505 through 32513. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved. For the next section, I will turn over the meeting to the deputy mayor pro tem.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve the consent agenda with the mayor's abstention as follows. Item C1, resolution number 32514.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item C1, resolution 32514, as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. Motion is carried with the mayor's abstention. I will turn it back to the mayor.
Thank you. Next item is a public hearing regarding the discontinuation of Marion Municipal Airport Committee. Before we open the public hearing, do we have a presentation or a comment on that?
Thank you, Your Honor. No presentation. This is simply a cleanup matter. Now that the runway has been sold, the requirements of the Marion Municipal Airport Committee is no longer required. A big part of the responsibility was to provide some oversight with the lease agreement that we previously had. So it is no longer required. We did share this with the council's airport subcommittee previously. And we recommend approval.
Thank you. At this time, the public hearing is open. If anyone is here to address the city council on this matter, please come forward. Either in favor or in opposition, please come forward. Okay. Seeing no one is coming forward, we will ask the staff if they've received comments outside the meeting.
We have not received any.
Okay, note that for the record, and then we'll close the public hearing and proceed to the motion.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 25-25, repealing Chapter 12, Article 7 of the Marion Code of Ordinances regarding the Marion Municipal Airport Committee. Initial consideration.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 25-25, repealing Chapter 12, Article 7 of the Code of Ordinances regarding the Marion Municipal Airport Committee. Any discussion? Okay, pretty straightforward. All those in favor of approving the initial consideration of ordinance number 25-25, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved. Next item is a public hearing regarding discontinuing the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Do we have a report or a comment on that?
Yes, briefly, Your Honor. The Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee met and voted unanimously to disband or discontinue their committee. They feel that their original purpose has largely been fulfilled and that the ongoing needs are being largely met by staff and city operations. They do feel that if there were to be any further need, the current function that they are providing would be better served by more of a volunteer or friends group rather than a committee. This committee was actually never formally created within Iowa code. The requirements for a board or commission to be formally created is to do so by ordinance. So this is technically an informal committee. So rather than doing an ordinance, we will be doing this one by resolution.
Okay. The public hearing is now open. If anyone is here to address council with regard to this measure, please come forward. Have you received comments outside the meeting?
I have not received any comments.
Okay, please note that for the public record. We'll close the public hearing, proceed to the resolution.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 32515, approving discontinuance of the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 32515, approving discontinuation of the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Discussion? All those in favor of approving resolution number 32515, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. The next item is a public hearing regarding the 2025 crack ceiling project. We have a city engineer with a report.
Yes, Your Honor. So this project is going into the recently overlaid streets and taking those reflective cracks from the concrete layer that's underneath and filling those in so that we don't get water intrusion into our newly asphalted streets. This includes West 8th Avenue from Lyndale to approximately Donnelley Park and 10th Avenue or Business 151 from 35th to 13. We did get three bids. The low bid came in from paid asphalt at $71,792, which was 72.6% of the engineering estimate. Has a completion date of 11/31/25 with 300 working days, and we are recommending awarding this bid in contract.
Okay. The public hearing is now open. If anyone is here to address council with regard to this measure, please come forward. And we'll ask staff if you've received comments outside the meeting.
I have not received any.
Mike?
I've not.
Okay. Please note that for the record, we'll close the public hearing, proceed to the motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the project calendar regarding the 2025 crack ceiling project as follows. Resolutions 32516 through 32517.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar for the 2025 crack ceiling project, including Resolution 32516 and 32517. Discussion? Mike, do you have any sense of why the big variation between the three bids?
So if...
I mean, one was almost half of the, the one, the lowest was almost, I guess not half.
Yeah, so this is actually the first time we've, well, the second time we've bid this project. If you recall, the first time we bid it, we got zero bidders, so there wasn't any bids to accept. So this is something new. This is normally something that our maintenance crew would do, but given the traffic on these roads, this isn't something that we feel comfortable doing with our workforce. So this is brand new to us as well.
Okay.
We'll obviously do inspection. We'll make sure that it meets specs, just like all our other projects. So we'll have someone dedicated out there to make sure it's done properly.
Okay. Congressman Harper has a comment question.
Mike, you said this includes Business 151 East from 35th out to 13?
Yeah, so here's kind of the picture, so you can see what we're talking about. So the both lanes, we've overlaid over the past couple of years to maintain that so we don't get water intrusion underneath it. And then similar, if you recall 29th Avenue, how bumpy that was at each joint, we're trying to prevent that.
So with that overlay that has been put on Business 151 in the last couple of years, that's already opened up cracks?
Yep.
Okay, so this is, it's a preventive measure?
Correct.
Okay.
Like I said, this is normally done by our maintenance crew. It's just these two roads have so much traffic on them that we didn't feel to do it safely. We'd rather hire someone to do it.
Yeah, and I failed to ask when this first came up what was driving the necessity of this, but it is just the natural creation of cracks, and we want to get ahead of it so that new work doesn't get degraded. So, got it. Thanks.
Remember our pavement curve. If we can hit it early versus waiting until it deteriorates, proactive.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the project calendar for the 2025 crack ceiling project, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 25-22, approving the request to rezone property from SR2, suburban medium-density, single-family residential, to SR3, suburban medium-density, single-family residential for property located east of Lucor Road and north of Artesian Road, Marion, Iowa. This is Craig J. Tobin, final consideration.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 25-22, approving the request to rezone property from suburban medium-density, single-family residential to suburban medium-density, single-family residential SR3 for the property located east of Lupla Road and north of Artesian Road. This is the final consideration. Any discussion? Go ahead.
There's hardly discussion, but I think it's a point as we've, this has come up, that this is a final consideration. We've had a lot of conversation and research and back and forth on this topic. So if we're not having a lot of conversation here, for those who are interested in this discussion, we've had past meetings, lengthy discussions on this topic, which I think we had a lot of our questions answered regarding the changes and why this was changed and the lot sizes and what we're going to do, so.
Well, I think it's worthwhile, Nicole, if you're able to just refresh our memory on the difference or, I guess, the similarity between this new zoning and the former zoning in terms of...
Yeah, so the former R2 zoning district has the same bulk regulations, so that includes setback requirements, that includes minimum lot area, minimum lot width, as what is being proposed today as the SR3 district. So it's the main difference, the only difference would be a change in title between the two types of districts, from what was formerly the R2 to what is currently being requested as the SR3.
But somehow it allows more lots to be filled, fit into this area, though?
When it was originally platted and zoned, it was zoned as the R2 district. Back then, the next zoning district that we would have had, the lots weren't zoned for that higher, lower-intense zoning district. When it was rezoned through the city rezoning process, SR2 was picked versus SR1, just so we didn't create legal non-conforming homes on all these lots within this district.
So the way it was originally zoned, before, the way it was originally zoned would have allowed the same number of lots?
Being requested.
Being requested.
Correct.
And just through our process of applying our new zoning classifications, it was put into a lower-density situation?
Correct.
Okay, but the original zoning, when the preliminary plat was filed, would have allowed this same number of lots?
It would have been the same, yep, the same setback.
Well, and that's, I was initially, just for everyone's sake, opposed. But with that information, I guess, you know, that changed my position because my initial thought was, whatever it was originally zoned, and when the current owner bought it, it was, you know, I mean, should have known what the zoning was and what the capacity was for a number of lots. But that bit of information, I guess, changed my position, so personally. Anyone else? Okay, then we'll vote. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 25-22, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 32518, approving Champions Estates, 5th Edition Preliminary Plat located east of Lucor Road and on either side of Artesian Road, Marion, Iowa. This is from Craig J. Tobin.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 32518, approving Champion Estates 5th Edition Preliminary Plat. Discussion?
Your Honor.
Please go ahead.
Yeah, so I've commented on this a couple of different times, certainly at last work session. So the northern portion of this preliminary plat, certainly the change in the number of lots that is contained in that serves as an effective transitional buffer, if you will, to the property to the north, which is, has the potential of being a higher-density development. Is, am I saying that right, Nicole?
That is correct.
Okay. And the only thing that was a bit surprising to me, as I said at work session on Tuesday, is the southern addition to the area, which I didn't understand was material to this. I was focusing more on the northern portion of what is shown here on the screen. So once again, at least the concept of a transitional buffer between use density still is valid, so, okay. I just wanted to make sure that I'm still clear on that. Appreciate it.
A question for Nicole. When the, when the houses on Artesian that are there right now, when that development was platted, was there any indication of what would be located north of them or what was planned for the rest of the community? So if I was purchasing a home on that lower, the lowest roll there, plot 12, let's say I was gonna build on plot 12, would my builder have known what else was going to be going north of there? Was that in our plan at that time, or was it just ag?
Yeah, the Preal Maria plat did include this section as well. So the entire Champions Estates development was platted with the single-family lots, including the area on both sides of those built-out homes along Artesian. Even to the north side of them, it would have been single-family homes that they would have expected to be built behind them.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of resolution number 32518, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve ordinance number 25-23, amending Chapter 340 of the Marion Code of Ordinances related to sign regulations. This is the city of Marion, and it's our final consideration.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 25-23, amending Chapter 40 of the Code of Ordinances related to sign regulations. Discussion? All those in favor of approving ordinance number 25-23, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve ordinance number 25-24, amending Chapter 340 of the Marion Code of Ordinances relating to district uses and specific use standards pertaining to gas stations. City of Marion, second consideration.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 25-24, amending Chapter 340 of the Code of Ordinances related to district uses and specific use standards pertaining to gas stations. Discussion? Okay, this is the second consideration. All those in favor of ordinance number 25-24, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. Next item is a public hearing regarding the sale of a portion of the public basin described as Lot C, author's 5th edition, to the property owner of 3470 Montgomery Circle. Do we have a presentation?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and City Council. I just have a few slides here for this proposed sale of property. The applicant does live at 3470 Montgomery Circle, outlined in red there on the screen. The portion he is looking to purchase from the city is highlighted there by the aquamarine triangle on the backside of his property. He is looking to purchase .025 acres of a public basin. Because this is public property, we do not have to go through the vacation process that we typically see for alleys and road right-of-way. So that's why we're here today, just requesting that public hearing for the sale of the property. For that public basin, we did have staff take a look at the request. That portion is at the top outer edge of the basin. It is a flat area, and it is not being necessarily utilized to contain water during those rain events. When this property was going through the planning process and then public improvement process, so up on the screen there on the left-hand side is the plan of improvements that went through the engineering division. As you can see, that triangle area where it kind of bumps out was included with this property. But as it moved through that process and then was eventually final-platted, that notch, the line was drawn straight, and that notch had disappeared and was then incorporated into the public basin area. Just like we do with alleys, we look at the 100% assessed value of the land. In this case, it is just the one property owner. I'm sorry, we calculated it based off of that land value. Now, on the screen, you can see what that final acquisition cost would be for the piece of property. The applicant is aware of that price, and he is still wanting to move forward with it. Associated with this request is a plat of survey that is on tonight's agenda as well. And that's to more clearly define with the legal description what this property would be described as.
Okay, is that it?
Yeah.
Thank you, Nicole. At this time, the public hearing is open. If anyone is here to address council with regard to this measure, please come forward. Okay, we'll ask staff if you've received comments outside the meeting.
I have not received any. I have not either.
Okay, please note that in the record. We'll close the public hearing and proceed to the motion.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number 32519, approving the sale of a portion of the public basin described as Lot C, author's 5th edition, to the property owner of 3470 Montgomery Circle, Marion, Iowa, Robert McFarland.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the sale of a portion of the public basin described as Lot C, author's 5th edition, to the property owner of 3470 Montgomery Circle. Discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Nicole, how big is that parcel that we're selling? You gave an acreage size.
.025.
Okay, thank you.
The purpose for wanting to buy this property, we don't know.
He stated that he has been mowing and maintaining it. So I think he just wants to incorporate it into his property.
Okay, and just to be clear, it doesn't impact the functioning of that basin?
It does not.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving resolution number 32518?
Mayor, we need a roll call vote.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mayor Abou Osley?
Yes.
Ms. Menser?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Sterneb?
Yes.
Okay. The motion, the resolution is approved. Mr. Brandt?
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 32520, approving plat of survey number 2976 for property located south of 35th Avenue and northwest of Montgomery Circle, Marion, Iowa, Robert McFarland.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution 32520, approving plat of survey number 2976 for the property south of 35th Avenue, northwest of Montgomery Circle, to be sold to Robert McFarland. Discussion? All those in favor of approving resolution number 32520, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved. Next item is a public hearing regarding an alley vacation for the southern one hundred and twenty feet of the north-south alley between Thirteenth and Fourteenth Streets and between Fifth and Sixth Avenues. Do we have a presentation? There you are.
So the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of this request to vacate the self-half of the alley here. Um, the property owner lives on the west side of the alley. It is a ten foot wide by one hundred and twenty foot alley. The east side of that property is owned by the Marion Independent School District. So the request is to vacate it, um. Um, from looking at the aerial imagery, uh, starting in two thousand, the property owner at the time started to have encroached into that grass alley with a fence and over time from two thousand and five to current, that fence enlarged. And today, um, the property owner has parked vehicles in there and has the fence located within that public alleyway. But here's kind of what that looks like today. The one on the left is from Fifth Avenue looking north. The one on the right side is standing within the east-west alley that is public alley, um, looking southward, just to kind of give you that idea of what that alley does look like today. So looking, um, for the vacation of this, we did reach out to the school, um, and they did take this item to the school board. They did indicate their intent um, to purchase. If that were the case for this public alley to be vacated, um, they would like to purchase their fair share, their half of the alley. Even though the um, adjacent property owner is utilizing it, it is still city prop policy that we offer both sides of that alley to both adjacent property owners. But the current owner that is utilizing the alley is aware of this and is aware that if the vacation is approved and if the sale of the alley is divided in half between both parties, that they would have to relocate their vehicles onto just their portion of the property along with their fence.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. At this time, the public hearing is open. If anyone is here to address counsel with regard to this measure, please come forward. Okay, seeing no one is coming forward, we'll ask the staff if anyone has provided comments outside the meeting.
I have not received any.
I have not received any.
Okay, with that, we'll uh, note that for the record, and we'll close the public hearing.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number three, two, five, two, one, approving the vacation of the southern one hundred and twenty feet of the north-south alley between Thirteenth and Fourteenth Streets and between Fifth and Sixth Avenues, Marion, Iowa. This will be Whittledge.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three, two, five, two, one, approving the vacation of the southern one hundred and twenty feet of the north-south alley between Thirteenth and Fourteenth Streets and Fifth and Sixth Avenues. Discussion. So that, uh, just to be clear, both adjacent property owners have indicated they would buy their their half.
Correct.
Okay. Anyone else? Any comments, questions? Okay, and just for purposes of of the the public, uh, we have been going through over the last number of years, a process of vacating alleys that have never been developed as alleys or used as alleys. And they're basically grass, grass areas that are being used by the adjacent property owners. And we don't foresee the need for them to be used for public purposes. Uh, is that correct?
That is correct. Um, in this one, there was not a curb cut. There wasn't that approach that a lot of times we do see, so we do believe that the topography would not um, be conducive.
So it couldn't even be used as a public alley and because there's no curb cut, yeah.
Not at this time.
And there's no need for it, we've determined. Okay. With that, we'll vote. All those in favor of approving resolution number three, two, five, two, one, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number three, two, five, two, two, setting the public hearing date for September fourth, twenty twenty five, regarding the sale of the southern half of the north-south alley between Thirteenth and Fourteenth Streets and Fifth and Sixth Avenues.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three, two, five, two, two, setting the public hearing date for September fourth, twenty twenty five, regarding the sale of the southern one hundred and twenty feet of the north-south alley between Thirteenth and Fourteenth Streets and Fifth and Sixth Avenues. Discussion on the setting the public hearing date. All those in favor of approving resolution number three, two, five, two, two, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. The next item on our agenda is a public forum, which is the time set aside for comments from members of the public on any topic. If anyone is here to address counsel, please come forward at this time. Okay, seeing no one is coming forward, we will close.
Sorry, we have to receive.
You have a comment outside the meeting, go ahead.
Um, letter was received by Chad Todd. Um, he wrote in opposition of the Aquatic Center project, and this letter was sent to all of you as well.
Okay. Anyone else to address counsel or any other comments outside the meeting to be shared? No? Okay, we will close the public forum and proceed to council comments. We'll start with council member Jensen.
Well, Monday will be a glorious day for parents who get to send their kids back to school. So just a warning, there's gonna be a lot more kids in the street, a lot more cars moving around. Uh, so we look forward to that, and then it's also gonna be the beginning of high school football season.
Okay, thanks for coming here, okay. Sarah?
Saturday, Saturday morning is the second to the last sunrise yoga. Um, we are going to meet on Labor Day Saturday. We typically have not, but because it's still in August and we have an instructor who is willing to teach that day, we will host sunrise yoga on the thirtieth as well, so. No, sir, please come join us. I'll be there at seven thirty at Lau Park on Saturday morning. And also, thank you to our garden helpers and our garden. We looked, it's been a robust year of harvesting. And Kim has been helping with that as well, but um, we have a great group of volunteers and they have been um, busy with, I'd say, a garden that's really been, had a good year, so we thank them for that.
Well? Okay, well, uh, I just have a couple of things. Uh, on the, on the tenth, uh, we observed the um, your birthday, uh, we observed the uh, fifth anniversary of the DeRachio. And I've just been seeing lots of memories on on social media and on that are popping up of of things that I had posted during that time of what we were going through, our um, uh, our press conferences, uh, all the things that were going on and just the the pictures and the memories of of that day and that event. And um, it's just, uh, it's been really um, a time to reflect on what a special community we have that uh, where it was able to work together and and pull through that devastating event. And it was a show of um, just the the resolve, um, and the type of community that we have uh, and the people who live here, uh, that we were able to regain the momentum that the city was experiencing, really without skipping much of a beat. And um, to see the progress that is being made, to see where we are as a city today, where we have uh, one of the most recognized, successful downtowns anywhere in the state of Iowa, where we have people moving to this community weekly who say they chose to live here because of the quality of life offered here, because of the services offered here, because of the type of community it is, because of the 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 community, the feel of community and the and the opportunities they have here to experience a great quality of life. Um, so I just want to just recognize that and uh, thank everyone uh, for all their work and and um, continue to make Marion uh, one of the best places to live in Iowa and the country, frankly, um. I do want to comment on um, uh, just add a little bit to my comments from Tuesday night on the Aquatic Center project, um. You know, these decisions are not very easy to make, you know, we 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 take our job very seriously. Uh, we have very good decision makers. The pro- I I I believe wholly in the process, because in the last few years, we have evolved and grown up as a city, and everything we do is a part of a process. Decisions aren't made in a in a cavalier way or because someone thought it was a good idea. Decisions are made based on studies, based on good thinking, good data, um, they're well-founded. Um, and ultimately, I, you know, I, we certainly understand the impact on the tax, people's real estate tax bills, because we pay those same taxes. We we are also homeowners and we own commercial buildings, some of us in this in this city. And so we are impacted just the same as any other resident or business owner in this city by the decisions that impact taxes, and so we take those seriously. Ultimately, the process, as I said on Tuesday, started with the community and the decision ends with the community. Uh, any decision that we'll be making as a city council, uh, w- will be based on input from the community to put it on the ballot for a vote by the community. It is not a final decision to build an aquatic center or not build an aquatic center. It it, the decision whether or not to do it lies with the voters. And so I just want people to understand that, because we are getting some comments from people saying that, you know, we're 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 moving forward with this project, we're doing this project. The decision really comes down to the voters voting on it and and it and it and that's where it should lie. Uh, so I just want to clarify that and make sure that it's clear in the community that, you know, this this process started years ago, several years ago, by engaging the community to see what they wanted. Uh, lots of engagement and input opportunities, and the community said this is what they wanted, without thinking about the costs, because that's that was intentional. What is it that the community would like to see? And then we have taken that project, the the vision of the community and and put costs to it, and now we're taking it, now we're looking at it, we've taken it to the community again with the survey that was that was sent out to all the homeowners, asking them if they what they would be willing to support, uh, given the knowledge of the costs now. And so we will, we're taking that data and and information, and we will weigh that and make a decision of whether or not to proceed with a with a bond vote or whatever we decide to do, but it's all based on uh, what the residents have told us, so, um. And then the final thing is congratulations to Team Marion on uh, winning the fourth place in the Division One of the twenty twenty five Border Corporate Games. Uh, Ryan, would you tell us a little bit more about this?
Sure, uh, one thing, uh, that's that's quite an accomplishment. Um, we are, we were actually, for the last two years, we've been competing in a weight class that is, we are, we don't belong in, so this is the, this is for the large employers. Um, we should actually be in class two, so we performed very well uh, in in the class one. But uh, uh, this is, um, it's a really based on uh, health and wellness. Uh, and and it's, it takes place over the summer months. Uh, I was talking to Councilman Metzer earlier, uh, Marion Lau, uh, Lau Park has hosted a couple of events with the yoga. Um, just activities to get folks out, um, engaged, um, physical activity, uh, community service, uh, so putting together uh, meals, uh, blood donation, so a variety of different events to get uh, the different um, organizations within our area. Get out, get active, get to know each other, uh, provide, um, you know, camaraderie, um, give back to the community. Um, so very proud of our team. We have, uh, we've increased our participation over the years and uh, the results have have shown themselves. And it's, it's just a good, a good thing for Team Marion as we continue to work on our culture, so very proud of the team and very proud of the staff. Um, uh, Brinkley and Sue, uh, Brinkley and Parks and Rec and Sue Wilber in H R are kind of our point people, so they did a great job of rallying the troops and bringing team spirit, so very proud of it, and thank you for showing that off, Mayor.
Absolutely. We uh, celebrate all our wins.
Really quick, really quick, just um, the, we we in class one, there's two municipalities, us and our our friends uh, at Cedar Rapids, we we did beat Cedar Rapids. For the record.
Um, and then finally, uh, welcome on his first day on the job to our new police chief, Jeremy Sprague. So I hope everyone uh, uh, extends a warm welcome to him and support as he uh, begins to do his work.
Yeah, my, sorry, Mayor, really quick, uh, he is not here physically for those, uh, he was here earlier, but he is um, started his day at six A M. During roll call to meet with the officers, and then there's another uh, shift change, roll call at uh, six P M, so he's at the station now um, getting to to meet the rest of his teammates, so that's why he's not here. Uh, we do have our our former police chief in the back, uh, kind of holding down the fort while Chief Sprague is is doing that. But uh, we we will be having his uh, swearing in ceremony next council meeting.
Okay, and one more thing, uh, the dedication of the new sculpture in the city square is on the twenty eighth. I unfortunately will not uh, be in town for that, but uh, I hope everyone will come and be part of the 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 dedication. It's it's a really spectacular piece of art, and I think everyone's gonna love it, uh, but would you tell us the time, Seth? So five P M on the twenty eighth, uh, please pass the word, and um, I will look forward to hearing all about it. With that, uh, our meeting has come to an end. Thank you so much for being with us, and we'll see you next time.
Go Cyclones.